We'll stay inside the plans.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, united in the universal liberty of justice for all.
A need of approval of the agenda, but I think we made a couple of adjustments. We're going to add D.
Can I have your microphone on, please?
Yeah.
So I'll start again. We're going to add D to the consent agenda. And that will be a formative line calling to the Bacon Act seat in and in January of 2024. And I would like to add G to the regular agenda, a close session. For our attorney competent, how do you say that?
For attorney client privilege, but if we could add it right after the approval of the consent agenda, please.
Okay, that's fine. To the agenda for.
Mayor, if I may, forgot to add this to your agenda prior. I just want to give a quick update on the watershed discussion that we've been having because these are the regular agenda.
Okay, so we'll put it down in G.
Thank you.
All good. Someone will make the motion to approve it. I'll make motion to approve it again. Thank you. Any second, one second. Take change all in favor. All any opposed? All new announcements. Public comment, I've got Reece signed up. Ms. Williams, if you could get up and give us your name and free live.
Hi, my name is Reece Williams. I live on Royal Road, here in those river, and I'm here with the those river life enrichment center. But I'm okay come back. I'm here to follow up. I was here in February and now we're supposed to meet in March and decide stuff for COVID money for nonprofits. And. And I just wanted to touch base with you and see how things are going, where we stand.
I'll let our town manager get you a little bit up to speed. I know we still got a bunch of stuff that we've got to move forward with before we can release any of the money. And it might be, if you want to know a little more information, Daniel, we go ahead and.
Sure. So you're right. We discussed our funding earlier this year and we have, we are working on collectively as a stack, getting all of the required policies put together. So that we can, we can spend that money. The, the nonprofit requests that we normally do every year. It's going to be at the next meeting April 28th. So that would be your next opportunity to kind of make that formal request. And once we get through the policy adoptions, which will take the next month and a half or so, two months, that money will be eligible for expenditures. And we'll, we'll do a second round of, but we'll have to, the council will have to decide how they want to allocate the money. But assuming we want to invite nonprofits, we'll do another round of requests later this year.
Can I ask you a question, please? The meeting, the next meeting for the regular nonprofit request, is that going to be separate from the COVID relief?
Yes.
If it's two different funding, okay. Are we allowed to devote?
Sure. Again, I mean, we've, council and I have been talking about this sort of informally. And no one, no decisions have been made about how the COVID money will be spent. But I think we've all collectively decided that nonprofit funding is something that we want to look into. So. That's the plan.
All right. Do we need to get on the agenda or do we sign up for public comment for the next meeting?
You'll just sign up for public comment for the next meeting.
And just a little update for all of you today. We are back full speed again. We're eating together. Everything is back. Been 91 people there today and 26 take out lunch today. So we are thrilled. Any support, we would greatly appreciate from the town. Thank you so much. I will see y'all again. Thanks. Have a great evening.
Any other public comment? There are none. We'll move forward to approve the consent agenda for the modification.
I think we approved it. Another regular agenda.
You do get a left consent agenda. Right second, all in favor?
Okay, we discussed this.
Yeah.
Regarding the reappointment on planning board. Obviously I'm new, but I had some ideas about.
Excuse me, your microphone?
I'm new to the council, but I did want to maybe revisit the planning board composition and not so much. Or I'd like to strive the town to actually seek candidates that have a certain background. Construction, the education, large members that do now, agriculture, but realize that it won't be necessarily able to fill a position with a certain niche like agriculture, but nonetheless, I think that's what we strive for. So with the vacancy, I thought maybe it was a good time to at least for me to interject that idea. And I didn't know if with this particular vacancy, apparently the members willing to be reappointed. But if we could revisit and maybe open it up as we would if, if they weren't going to seek re, reappointment, just to see who we get. And as a council, I wouldn't mind just discussing. Cause I guess it's seven member board now. It's been reduced in size, but I think there are some sectors of the community, like said, construction and local businesses and then education. If we could get folks or at least try to identify candidates that might fill some of those backgrounds. So I just want to throw that in there. I don't know how the other council feels about that, but I just thought with this appearing on the consent agenda, I just want to bring that up. Be consideration.
In the last couple of years, council has adopted and then amended general rules of procedure for all committees. And it spells out each separate one. And that would be the place to set. What, what I'm saying is if you, if you decide on qualifications, then you need to amend those rules as to the planning board. So that, because it already says they have to be a member of, I mean, they have to live in the town. So that would be a place to set it in stone. Just FYI, more information to think about.
I've noticed another plan boards, they even through their policies or excuse me, the ordinance will have members that are in the ETJ. Because they could very much be affected by zoning decisions within town. So I mean, there's things to consider and I just didn't know if this council or this town has kind of circled back around revisited the planning board and its makeup and maybe just kick the tires and make sure it's still meeting our needs. And this was just the first opportunity since I came on council that the subject was brought up. I just throw that out there.
Director Jeff, idea does it affect this reappointment in any way tonight? On the consent agenda.
It would be to Mr. Cantrell to amend a motion if you want.
We are discussing this next week too, right?
You're discussing other vacancies. This is just a gentleman whose term has come up. Everyone serves the council's pleasure. So it would be up to y'all if you want to.
Okay, so can I amend my notion to move the reappointment of Heath Wiggins to the discussion next meeting?
In a second.
I'll second it.
James and Sanders first, yes, absolutely.
So in the past, with, and Jeff, your ideal is not wrong or, or not valid. It's just we've been restricted on who applies for the planning board or any other board for that matter. And so to target a specific person, that person's going to have to apply. That's simple to the plan. And in the past, we've just struggled. I think we have four applications on file now. Is that right, sir?
Yes, we currently have four applications on file.
Okay. And that's not, you know, if we have a couple of people in the next few months come off the planning board, that's not, that's not a whole lot to choose from. So, and my thinking is if we've got somebody and he and I'm not saying this, he's, he has attended in my knowledge, he's attended planning board pretty, pretty religiously. He's, he's been there and shows up and he, and he participates. So that's about as far as an ideal planning board member I can, I can, I can see us getting right now. Unless you have some idea about how you target these specific people and, and, and get them to apply to the plan.
Okay, well, I'll get maybe target isn't the right word. I just thought maybe we should open and solicit because one, I didn't know this vacancy was coming up till I saw it on the agenda. And there may be other people in town that didn't know there might be opportunities to get on the planning board. And I would like to see Mr. Wiggins reapply for it. And, but I, I just thought if we're going to have this vacancy and possibly another one coming up in short term, this I thought would be a good time as any to, to see if we can pigeonhole some of the applicants to maybe fill some backgrounds that aren't represented on the planning board now. And if it doesn't, I hope Mr. Wiggins and whoever else may be coming off or their term expiring, wouldn't take it as an affront that we just opened it back up for everybody. I hope they reapply.
I still have Mr. Wiggins' application and I can put it in your packets next time. I keep them on file until after they drop off the board.
Yes, I know oftentimes when there's vacancies, it appears on town's website. And then of course, if council and other members of public are aware of it, they might know somebody and say, hey, there's an opportunity to get on, you know, the board of adjustment or on the planning board or whatever. So rather than just, I was on a consent agenda, it was kind of like if, if there was a vacancy and it was filled immediately and there was never a consideration, I was thought, well, you know, tap the brakes and say, hey.
To clarify, this was not a vacancy. This is a term is occupying and it just was expiring. This has been our practice. Can do it however you want going forward, but if you're going to be considering qualifications in the packet next time, I will also include your general rules because you have to adopt some type of rules before you just start applying them to, to whichever board.
So, so would we be going forward now, would we be whenever somebody's terms up, whether it be on the board of adjustments or the planning board or the ag committee? In the past, if the person was willing to continue in that capacity, they have just been reappointed. So are we going down the road of not reappointing? We're going to look at every vacancy brand new? Is that what you?
Well, I just thought when they're, the, the term I think actually expired yesterday. So I mean, it is a vacancy. And then I thought, why not open up everybody, including the past? And obviously this gentleman would have a leg up. And maybe just a shoe in, but nonetheless, it just seems like it'd be short sighted for us to just roll over if there might be, you know, a top notch candidate out there that has been, you know, wanting an opportunity to get on the planning board. And here it is, and it wasn't even opened up for a consideration. We just said, well, somebody's in it to get to stay in it till they exceed their number of terms. And I thought everybody should reply for reappointment.
So. So, so would we apply that to all the boards?
Well, I would think that would be consistent.
I thought what they were doing was just pulling it off the consent agenda to evaluate it next week and see what kind of applications we get in. You know, they're not saying that they're not going to reappointing next time is what I understood.
It's totally up, it's totally up to you that, but ever since I've been on board, typically we will give, if they're willing, they put them right back in the seat. Cause they've been times we've been minus people, people wouldn't be filling seats. Short handed in a lot of communities, but Jim's got a good point, but we really just need to know that you can put your application in at any point in time and it sits on file until there's an opening and it's really up to us. As council to stay on top of those and look at it and decide who we want to fill these seats as they come open. I did look at the others this week. I did read through the others this week to see what we have. But we all have to see it in the night. I think you've got a great idea. I just don't know if we can find those spot on people who are. So they do have an opportunity for sure.
I guess my ask of this council, there'll be two-fold. One would be one, not have automatic reappointments, just have somebody who's already on the, when the term expires, they can submit their existing application if there's nothing new on it. End with any others. I mean, I just like to have a window of soliciting and saying there's an opportunity to get on one of these boards, rather than boards of this council. And so I guess that was one, just a policy change where reappointments would be through application, not just automatic without even opening up a consideration. And a second ask, which you know, that could be down the road or I thought this might be a good time is that try to identify certain backgrounds that we'd like to see on the planning board. And have those as a, you know, criteria that when we consider applications, say, well, it's actually a business or this would be a builder, this would be somebody in education. This is not large.
One problem we might have going forward with this, Jeff, is like, like his seat is open today, yesterday, whenever. So how long would we take to find this person to fill his seat? The one time board adjustments have trouble getting enough there to even have him a vote.
Yeah, in a perfect world, I'd like to say appear on our agenda before the term expired, expired as far as I know today. I mean, today it's not, it needs to be reappointed. It's a vacant, but you know, we had some more forward advance notice saying, well, at the end of the month or next month, you're going to have vacancy on your planning board and on your board of adjustment. And, you know, the person wants to be reappointed and, and, and we can get out in the community and say, there's opportunities or they can say the person that's filled the seat has other interests and they're going to seek reappointment and you're going to have vacancy if y'all don't find somebody.
Yeah, that'll be easy enough to do there.
Mayor Gonzalez, if I could just clarify. I'm going to need our clerks help with this, but the motion was made, that it was amended. And now we're in discussion. I just want to make sure that Senator, we're, we're on the same page here, that you're in discussion about moving Mr. Wiggins' appointment to the next meeting, right? Okay.
Moving, what they're doing is, is approving the consent agenda, basically moving.
Okay.
Wiggins' appointment off.
I got you. Okay.
And considering setting rules at the same time. One thing to keep in mind is we already have another vacancy. So now you've created two vacancies essentially. Or there are two vacancies because of Joe Elliott's resignation. So this, this is what the point the mayor is making is that, is that then there's a potential another one coming up. And if we don't have certain qualified candidates, now you've gone from nine, no, seven to.
Five automatically.
Five, five already, and you'd be down to four, and you're going to start having anymore and you run out of quorum.
That's just my biggest fear. But I don't think a week is going to hurt. So, so when were we planning on next week, next, or the week after, correct?
I, it was going to be on your, in order to give you time to look at those applications and possibly others come in.
Yes.
We were waiting until April 28th, but we can discuss it whenever council wants.
I'm, I'm open for discussion and I, I appreciate it. I do want to point out previous council amended it from what nine to seven and then by district. And that did take time. And I think there's things we want to send to the planning board. So I, I just don't want like months to go by. Randy can correct me if I'm.
Thank you, Jim. I was going to mention that before we had tried and set in place as our policy to equally divide the planning board into districts. Of course, there'll be one planning board seat that will have three and the other will have two. But so that's just something to keep in mind too, you know, going forward. It's kind of hard to do if you get a lot of applications from one district or another. If you want to keep it equal spread across town with representation from all three districts, it's kind of hard to do. It depends on your, how many people apply.
So was that adopted?
Would it be feasible to advertise the position with the qualifications that you need or the position?
Right now, the only qualification is that you live in the town. It's the only legally, the only adopted qualification is that you live inside the town. And no jump, that was, they did not adopt the part where you have to be by district. They just tried to make your appointments even though at the time. So if they followed that right now, your current vacancy from Joe, Mr. Elliott is in district two.
So I think a, a next good next that might be if we send you to all of those, we send all of you the rules of procedure so that you can see them. And, and Jeff, to your point, any changes that the board might want to make, that can happen at a regular meeting, you know, as far as qualifications or anything like that. But I think before we go too far, too much further down the rabbit hole, maybe we should step back and look at the existing rules or procedure. So we're all on the same page. I can send that out to you very soon.
Well, that's, that's why I'd like to have a discussion with this council. I don't know if Mr. Heathman, if there's a pressing matter and this needs to be rushed through the door, then you know, let's have a discussion now. I don't want possible changes to the planning board or, or how we appoint members to get in the way of it functioning that I've seen May second meeting. And I don't know how many other members will have for the May second meeting or whatever it's under consideration. But anyway. But yeah, that's my ultimate goal is to have that discussion with this council about maybe some of those things, but I'm not sure how to handle the Heathman reappointment. But I would like to see it come out as consent and last or stand till our next meeting. That would be helpful to me, but I understand these other mitigating factors.
The motion right now for Mr. Cantrell is to amend the consent, to approve the consent agenda, but to remove the reappointment of Keith Wiggins and add it to the planning board appointment discussion on the April 28th agenda.
I, I don't want to change that. I would like to.
We need a second on James' motion. Let's see if it's read.
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we got through and sent. Now we need to get a motion going to closed session. And what we'll do for the audience, we'll end up going to the background for just a few minutes to meet with our attorney and we'll be right back.
Did somebody make a motion?
We got to have one.
I'll make a motion to go in closed session to meet with attorney, attorney.
Second, James, all in favor? James, all in favor?
Okay.
I see.
Cheers.
All right, so we need to make a motion to come out of the closed session, probably, or we did it back there. We approved a minute. Okay, we did back there. All right, so moving forward with our regular agenda, A being state of the airport. I think you got Lou with us tonight to give us a speed on what they got going on.
Ms. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. You should have the annual report for your leisure when you have some time to read it. I'm going to go over some of the highlights from it. From an air service perspective, and again, I'm talking about 2021 statistics of what happened last year. From an air service perspective, we had five carriers operating. We had Allegiant, American, Delta, Sun Country, and United. We had 25 nonstop destinations out of Asheville, which I like to caveat by saying it's more destination stops than Greenville does. Our next closest competition in larger airport. I'm not going to go over what those 25 destinations are. But some of those, from a westbound perspective, as far west as Las Vegas and Denver. Some of the new ones that were added during the 2021 was Washington National Airport, Key West, Florida. Destin, Florida was added, Las Vegas, as I mentioned, just as one of our longest flights, and Minneapolis-St. Paul. So those are some of the new flights. Some of the carriers added new destinations, but there are destinations that we already had being covered. Such as Baltimore was being flown by, I'm sorry, that was, LaGuardia was being flown by Delta already. And then, and then American Airlines added in some new service there. Boston was something that Allegiant was flying and American added in that in last summer service. So that's kind of perspective of what we had from an air carrier and service perspective. From a passenger perspective, we had 1,428,266 passengers. That was up 102% over the previous year. Seats were up 58.7% for a total of 991,152. So traffic is.
Operations, we have from an airline perspective, we have 26,659. At General Aviation Military Operations, we have 49,000, we've got 49,000, 47. From a trucking standpoint, we had our new shuttle lot instituted in open. And we're working on, we opened up our south commercial ramp expansion, we've got nine and a half million dollars. Good turmoil is in design, and we've already left one contract out this year. That's pretty much working with. Just started and we have a base for our. Union perspective, we had our runway five K, we brought that back. Have that in quite a number of years in our runway part. That run in over $15,000 means that it contributes to our aviation program and Western Carolina Press Association's. We also have local artists and musicians back in the town. Also, we've got a new program called PPL Local Food, it's a test program, and it's engaging. Stable for your citizens. First, first individual, and it's helped our logistics staff. So loves the, loves the aviation, loves the airport, and the stores. Several days a week just walking our pathways. From a financial standpoint, we had operating revenues of 12 million, 25,000, how many? Operating expenses were 8.7, almost 8.8 million dollars. In the fiscal year, we have assets of 205 million dollars. As an increase of 36.9. That can answer any questions that y'all may have. With that, I really. I'm always very glad engaged with Mills River County Council. You are an important neighbor and you didn't expect to be out here. While I'm here though, I'd like to stick the opportunity to bring up something that we've had a little bit of a hiccup in some communication. That I wanted to, you know, bring to the tech because I thought it. The airport has been a very important, prosperous neighbor. A lot of the neighbors and you know, there's where the projects such as Sierra Nevada, projects like. Both of those, for example, the traffic circle that sits in front of those business communities, who force a great portion of that land is airborne. Provided the opportunity at the end, because we saw the importance of the progress coming out, so willingly. We also provided water meter access to the river. Without our cooperation with the river, they would have not, or they would not have opened that tunnel. At a lot more expense.
Water meter and the water line in from a different direction. So we provided that. So unfortunately, I'm bringing it up because when the airport needed support from the North Carolina Department of Transportation for funding for improvement to a road. Our Mills River neighbors kind of, you know, opposed that request, but they're really out without having the actual facts or information. Or even asking us to be participating in those discussions. So I really wanted to bring that up. I hate to see our communication go awry. We're good neighbors, but I did want to bring that up because I thought it was important that. We continue the good cooperation moving forward between the airport and the town of Mills River. With that, and that was my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions or comments you may have. Thank you for your time this evening. Anybody got any questions? Appreciate you being here. Appreciate that.
One of the two of the partners I know, Mr. Governor, who are on the council, we've got some other members I try and use to make rounds. If you all particularly, you all came on, it's been a busy first quarter of the year for us, so again, our. That great relationship. Hopefully, I'll be setting up appointments for those of you that have talent, go over what your thoughts are about. So we have familiarity and well-being all up before.
Thank you. Have a great weekend. Okay, moving on to item B, development moratorium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last meeting last month, after the discussion about the project on Jeffers Road. In the confusion that we discovered in the town's ordinance, there was interest in discussing a development moratorium specifically for major special use permits. In an effort to provide us an opportunity to clarify this ordinance standards with regards to quasi judicial decisions. We went back and researched the possibility of that, and it certainly is allowable under state law to implement a development moratorium. On specific types of permits. However, state law does not authorize moratoriums on residential development of any kind. So while we could, the town could implement a development moratorium for a period of time to adjust these standards. It would not have any impact on any residential type of development that might come through as a major special use permit. So if it's up to the board, how you want to proceed, there is a schedule in the permit in your packet that we've placed, put together. We would need to do some advertisement for a public hearing, and then, of course, have that hearing and decide how long a moratorium will be and its purpose. Again, we cannot do anything that would impact residential development, although it would give us the opportunity to clarify the standards a little bit that apply. Generally across the world for quasi judicial decisions. So it's up to the board on how you want to proceed at this point. We can still make the changes to the ordinance without the moratorium. That would be a very similar timeline. We would look, Mike and I would talk a little bit about reshuffling some priorities to get this sort of top, if that's council's desire, then we could go forward.
I'll lead us off here with, you know, my, I get the most phone calls in concerns about the density. You know, for a long time, I would try to sell them, oh, well, you know, land and measures are so high. If we can get them, they can get, if the builder can get tighter together and get more on the acre, it'd have to be cheap. But this instance that we just went across, it wasn't nowhere I felt affordable. I may be looking at it wrong, but it just didn't feel affordable. So a lot of phone calls I get is worried about the density. They just feel like four per acre, that'd be too much in this rural atmosphere. I will say that most people that call me was native, local people. Maybe a couple that had moved in here in the last 15 years, but I would still consider local. Depending before a lot of the changes happen. I'd like to hear some of y'all's thoughts on this, because if we're going to move forward, we're going to need to do it sooner than later, or not mess with it at all. Not how staff come up if we can't direct, we need to direct planning board and staff as to what this group of thought is actually looking for to make the process. I don't want to send this to the planning board, have them spend two or three nights on it, come to us and us. I don't waste of time with it. Kind of what we're looking, if I see it a totally different way, that's what they're going for.
Most of the phone calls that I have received was over density also and traffic.
Well, and how to advocate that we still move forward with revisiting that multifamily and the density within it. But I don't see a need for a moratorium. They're usually reserved for urgent and compelling matters, especially involves, you know, public safety or health or something of that nature, and I don't think this surprises that, especially. Because it can't touch on, it wouldn't touch a similar development that we just had approved because of the way our ordinance is written. So I would still like to move forward, but I don't see the urgency for, that warrants a moratorium.
Well, do y'all have any direction to send to planning board and staff move forward kind of like? All rolling on this?
So, Shane, my thoughts behind this is. The four units per acre has in the past served Mills River pretty well because developers couldn't really make a dollar doing it at four units per acre. But Jeffrey's Road project. He's, he saw that he can make a dollar at four units per acre, which I consider high density. Even the four per acre. So in $1,800 a month to start for rent, I don't consider very affordable. So the ideal was the denser, you could make it more affordable it is, but I think that that goes right out the window. Because if somebody's willing to do the four per acre. And still have a high density, all you're going to have is just the high density. You're not going to have affordability also. So. That being said, I would, I would. In a perfect world, I would like to direct the planning board to look at something to, in the two and a half. Maybe the top three units per acre area as far as the density goes. That's just my opinion.
We have a. That fill, hit the rest of the place, both of council, that number, they're going to have to do. We're going to back the sheet, we'll see how they look at it, I would feel about it.
Yes, I agree with that, and there may be opportunities to look at how much of the land that's part of the development is non-buildable. Because that's, you know, somebody could buy 100 acres and only one acre where it's buildable. If they can figure out how to get 400 homes on that one acre. That's what they're going to try to do, and that's sort of what happened on Jeffers Road, is that they bought a lot of bottom land and leave it idle. And they crammed all the houses up next to the road into the neighbors, and you get what you get. So I think, yes, to make a short answer long, but yes, what Councilman Austin said, and then also, I hope they'll look at other parameters. That sort of drive what the development looks like and how much of the land they're buying that's not buildable. Sort of really, really compresses that density onto a smaller acreage all the time, but we always thought maybe somebody buy 10 acres and two, three acres would be out. And they can sort of, but not in this case, they.
See, I'll be honest in saying that I always figured that the watershed restrictions would protect us from what happened on Jeffers. But not thinking about them inquiring the bottom line to use to stay out of that. What is it, 20% right there? This is probably the critical area, correct?
They're not in a water, protected watershed, so they're in one of the phase two state reviewed areas, so there are state stormwater requirements that basically. I don't know the exact details, but basically you have to control all new runoff to a certain extent, but they're not in a protected watershed that limits new built upon area.
I, I think the units per acre does need to be discussed. I think there's wiggle room on both ends. I would also like to see the planning board really work on definitions of duplexes, townhomes. It is vague in our code book, and we have a little bit of crossing over, I think. Maybe just if we could get some clarity and some definitions, that would go a long way as well. But and the last thing I'll add up. If we can make a condition in the ordinance that if they want to pursue something more dense than one house every three per acre. That have a component of workforce, affordable housing as defined in the ordinance, which is not defined now. And, you know, sort of use the carrot and stick, if you want to get tire density, you're either going to, you know, whatever the definition looks like, with a certain percentage of their units. Have to be in this price range and or some of that nature. So I think, you know, rather than just having an open invitation that you can do multifamily four to four per acre, I think, you know, you could tie it to your objectives. Mr. Mayor, and say, if you want to go above three quarters of an acre per dwelling, then you might have to look at. You might have to meet our workforce housing definition, which we don't have, but hopefully the planning board can look at other jurisdictions and get some guidance on. What affordable housing is, what will be, or what workforce housing is, and how to marry those two, so that if we do get any more. More dense developments, they'll serve a need of. More dense developments, they'll serve a need of. Not just lock the P or wherever you prefer, but actual local folks that be affordable housing.
I was just going to ask. So I've heard a lot about workforce and affordable housing. So what does that look like, Jeff? I mean. If the developer, so the developer, let's just take an example, the one over on Jeffrey's Road. And there was, that was approved for Michael Correctness, I'm on a hundred and forty, forty-two minutes.
One forty-eight, yeah.
I say, so would you require someone to set aside ten percent of those? So he's renting those, he's not selling. So would you require somebody to set aside ten percent of those to, that the rent couldn't be over X number of dollars? Is that, is that what, is that what you envision?
Yeah, and most developers that I've seen in the past don't change the units that are targeted for affordable housing. They want that overall development density for the profit margins. So they build them just like the others and they just take the hit and say at least ten percent. Usually don't put them in one place. They put one unit in every building that'll be affordable housing and have that caveat that that rent. Will stay within whatever range is defined as affordable or.
Okay, so let's go steps further. If, if the developer was selling houses. And you require him to have ten percent of his houses to, as certain, that he couldn't sell over a certain dollar mark. For lower, lower income people, workforce housing. What would happen whenever that house came up for sale again?
That'd be a town attorney question. I think it'd be some sort of a covenants. That if you buy it as affordable housing, that they even put covenants on it that would. Make it that such that that first buyer wouldn't realize this capital gain by selling it at, you're buying at a discount and selling it. You know, I'm way outside my wheelhouse here, but there's got to be some sort of deed restriction or covenants you can put on that property to say that it's been identified as workforce housing and. The current owner bought it at that. And it'll stay at that once resold, it's kind of like.
And that can be developed in a media level with local numbers. You, you can, you could develop with numbers, you can move resources and, and that, because that number would be a floating number based on the car. You know, because we might be looking at today and it'd be eight ninety-five a month. But four years from now, you know, face to go down here, it could be, you know, eight fifteen.
Right.
So, or whatever the payment would be.
So I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about how do you go about in making sure that this happens? I mean. To Jeff's point, I, I don't really have a problem with that, but. I'm thinking about, we have sign ordinances in Town Mills River that are totally ignored. Because we don't have the resources to enforce our sign ordinance. So how would we go about enforcing? Something on private development like this to make sure. Things are going the way we've put in our code as well.
So to Mr. Young's point, this is really a great question for the attorney, the town attorney. From my experience, I have seen. Other cities do things like this where they're either rent controlled or they're, the houses are sold at a lower, lower than market rate. Or to a certain percentage of income. And there has to be some sort of de-restriction or development agreement with the, the community to ensure that those things. Remain in place. So I think Mike and I's first step might be to reach out to other jurisdictions as well as local agencies like the. Housing Assistance Corporation Hendersonville, this is what they do. They, they try to build affordable housing, workforce housing. And get some information from them. But there would have to be almost certainly something tied to the property for. Either in perpetuity or twenty years or something like that, that they would remain affordable.
I thought about that after we left the other night. Nothing, you know, them guys sold us on this idea. That it's, that theirs are, they're going to rent these out, they'll retire or whatever. Didn't say, but that's kind of. But nothing said as soon as they get this built out, they can't sell it to another corporation. Yeah, you can do, you know, fluctuate however, might not be the same standard. I don't know if that's something else that could be addressed, you know. A good neighbor now might not be a good neighbor, so I don't know. We gotta send this back, one way or the other. We can get them looking at the affordable houses aspects of it.
So I'll just say before we go too much further that I, I think. Mike and I are in agreement that the, the quasi judicial standards need to be updated regardless of how we proceed with, with regards to density because. They're confusing and they're somewhat contradicting in some instances. So I think. You're welcome to direct us in a formal sense to do that, but I'm happy to just work with Mike to get that project going if we can.
I'll tell you straight up, I'm not smart enough to react to. It's key people, they have the right.
Yes, we'll, we'll, we will work on that and in whatever direction you want to offer as far as.
And like in those back to pines or whatever, we'll give to that section. That's some of what you're talking about.
Yes. Right.
I, I, I don't want to, I would like to send up the planning board. Density and quasi judicial slash definitions this first. Maybe I would like to see us tackle affordable workforce housing. Maybe next. Because I, I, yeah, it seems like when that gets brought up, that's.
Does it necessarily need to be tied to the special use, so the family needs to be handled all the way?
Unnecessarily.
It can be modified separately, okay?
Yeah, I mean, the permitting procedure. Those different permitting procedures already exist. So depending upon. What this workforce housing program might look like, that might steer it to administrative approval or legislative or quasi judicial. Standards stand alone for as far as the quadra judicial, special use permit items, density stands alone on its, on its own merits. And then we will have to come up with a program for the workforce housing component of it. And, and you're right, that. They will take some time simply because it's a complicated topic. There's a lot to consider.
Since we're talking about this, I'm just going to bring it up for council. These particular hearings could be heard by the board of adjustments, correct? But ever since way back, Mr. Carlin, one of us did. We played right here, don't play with all council. We get the board of adjustments here. All we're into this, we won't leave them in council's hands. Or we feel like the board of adjustment. Do a better job with it. Knowing that back then, here in all these. Where y'all at with that?
I'm, I'm all for leaving them right here at this table myself.
I am too. We, we wanted this exposure, so.
Anything else we need to direct before we move on tonight?
With regards to density, is there a number in mind?
Two and a half to three is the number that's been thought out.
Okay.
Stay with that to start with and see what they come back with.
Yeah, I don't want to pigeonhole or, you know, put too many guardrails up. I, you know, give, that gives them a sense of what we're looking for, but they, they'll craft.
And I am correct in saying that the master plan and all the people that spoke was. They spoke in favor of the rural atmosphere of Mill River, correct? There was a lot of that.
Correct.
But they was asking for affordable housing also, correct? So we're trying to fix two things with one problem.
And when the picture got brought up of the townhomes though, those went down.
I don't think, were you here for that one?
When it was online?
Yeah, you know, yeah, we, we, when we held those online sessions. Oh, yeah. Yeah, this was, this was before Mike got, we were doing the comprehensive planning input sessions. They were all virtual because of our dear friend COVID. And yes, we did have some interactive activities online and we showed different. Different built environments, single family on smaller lots, single family on larger lots, apartments, townhomes. And the rankings were higher for the larger lots, single family. And then townhomes, there was a distinct drop in the level of support for those. So that is correct, what you just said. There was, they were less popular than other housing types.
So you can grace forgot right now, and Mills River, we don't have a lot of sewer, more access.
Right.
Anything else before we move on? I'd, I'd like to clarify what you're sending to the planning board for my, for my minutes, please. The quasi judicial and special use standards. Density, two and a half to three per acre, the definitions of duplex and townhomes. And then after, look at workforce housing. Is that correct?
I like that the best to separate it. I'm sorry.
I was just, I like to marry the two.
You would like to compare.
I'd like the affordable housing, workforce housing to be the gateway to get higher density. That if you're not going to try to serve that need, then. You don't need to do multifamily in Mills River.
Would you, would you want to put up to? A number on the density side if you, if you need, say, ten percent in the workforce, affordable housing.
I think that's an excellent approach. I don't know what numbers to give or what we should.
I'm trying to pin you down here. Give me a number.
Also, we had mentioned something about buying an excess of land to get the numbers crammed on. Smaller acreage, is that still included?
So there, and, and Mike, please feel free to jump in here, but there are provisions in the ordinance for like cluster developments that would allow you to. In a sense, cluster development and reserve other open space. Those, while the intention is good, the way that they're written don't really, doesn't really achieve that mission, that purpose. I think we have enough information to move forward. Mike, you, I mean.
Yeah, what I've heard is that Daniel and I will work on drafting the text amendment for quasi judicial procedures, not going to the planning board yet because we need the. Draft language. And then I will bring to the planning board at the next meeting. The, the density and I'll just say related topics for discussion and feedback and can report back to council.
And we can, we can, we can provide to them and ultimately to you all some, some examples of what that might look like on the ground.
And obviously research numbers like we're discussing as well.
Because it's happening everywhere.
It is.
You good, Sue, with what you got? Okay, we'll move on to see the audio visual upgrades.
Yes, sir. So back in twenty twenty, when again our, our dear friend COVID showed up. We began streaming these meetings with this little webcam right here in front of the computer. And it's worked pretty well, although it's proven to be a little bit unreliable. And would, if the public has come to expect, and I think we've even garnered more participation by streaming these meetings live. So I have reached out to a couple of local folks to get quotes on improving the AV system in this room, which would be fixed cameras. Upgraded microphones, there'd be a camera, a couple of cameras in the back of the room to capture council. Cameras on behind you all to capture the audience as well as the speaker. And it would be far more integrated than it is now. We wouldn't have to set up all this stuff every single, every two weeks. So we've got a couple of quotes ranging from a low of around ninety thousand, a high around a hundred and twenty thousand. I am waiting on another one. Which would give us, I spoke in the four companies, three of them wanting to give us bids, so we're requesting a hundred thousand dollars. Which will be in your next item under the ordinance, uh, excuse me, the budget ordinance, to help get those, get that project started. And if we, if council's in favor of that, we can move forward with it beginning tomorrow essentially. And it would be up and running by the end of fiscal year.
I did mention to you one time, if they did expand in some form or fashion, they simply simply moved the rail.
That's right. Yeah, the, the cameras would all be hardwired. Power or ethernet is how they would operate. So it'd just be a matter of rerunning the wires depending upon how we set up the room.
Then can you tell how many people are usually watching council meetings online, Facebook or?
I don't have.
You don't have an account, you don't have.
On Facebook, you can't tell who's watching unless they comment or hit like or something, but I know there are people out there. That I've talked to that aren't just listening.
I can just say on planning board, there's usually eight to ten people on Facebook every.
I would say just, you know, I regularly check my phone just to make sure the stream is still active. And there's, for councils, anywhere from. Ten people, there's been as many as twenty or twenty-two on there at a time. Yeah, but I would say averaging at least ten people on meeting. And I'm sure Facebook can give us some insights, but I'll have to call Mark Zuckerberg for that information.
I just think it's just the, the time is now. Do we need a? So you're looking for a motion from us to authorize Daniel to sign a contract, to be able to sign a contract once he's satisfied with it?
Up, up to a hundred thousand, yes.
Anything over that, it'll come back to us for discussion and approval. Any discussion on that before we?
It actually started tomorrow.
Ordering process of the supplies will start tomorrow. They would, it wouldn't be in for a few weeks.
I'll make motion.
A second.
James, all in favor? In the post. Move on to the ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash oh six, man physical year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to hand this over to our finance director in just a moment, but just for, by way of background. One of the things that we, we do each year as part of our operations is collect property tax for, for the town and for the fire department. And, and pretty typically, we underestimate revenues and so that we're conservative in our efforts. And oftentimes we bring in more tax revenue for the fire department than what we budgeted for. And so we do these, these amendments typically every year in the spring. So we can bring about the budget, budget in the balance, because if you remember from our game a few, few weeks ago, the budget always has to be balanced, right? Anyway, it's all yours, Sue.
Okay, so, oh, I was going to explain what the fire department for starters, but again, that, and we, we've said this over and over, but. The reason we're in this position is because Orlie did such a great job. Or, or is doing such a great job by exceeding what was budgeted. Anyway, so with your. Ordinance, basically we're, we're, we're moving funds around in the, in the budget to cover the fire department. We're pulling from capital outlay for. More than one, more than one place, monies that we're, there's no way we're going to spend this year. For example, the Mills River Valley Trail, we had budgeted sixty thousand dollars for engineering and that's not going to happen this year. So we'll, we just move that to a different department in order to cover this, as well as contingency from the admin department. In addition, the riverbank restoration back in August, prior to most of the members of this council being here. Council did approve an updated contract for the riverbank restoration. Because as, as you all know, expenses keep going up. Materials are going up and before they even started. It, it, we were already exceeding the proposed budget. It, it, we were already exceeding the proposed budget. So a new contract was signed and. Then, then we also amended that contract later. To include repairs to the rear trail. As it had been washed out, having the same contractor do it while it's here, save this money. But there was essentially $58,000. That's been approved for overruns and. Excuse me, increased expenses and of the rear trail repairs, but they were never appropriated. So this is where it would be appropriated. And the final piece is for the audio visual contract that you just approved. We would be appropriating fund balance for that as well as for the riverbank. If anyone has questions, I'm happy to, to answer questions.
So, sorry. So originally, we had thought about $150,000 on the riverbank. Restraits, and it came in at. Two oh eight. Is that what we ended up spending?
Um, no, um, it came in at. Trying to do the math, 150 plus 58. The remainder that's being appropriated from fund balance covers audio visuals. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it does. It, it, yeah. Essentially, yeah, it comes in at two oh eight.
Okay, and that was with the, with the trail that got washed during the flood and everything too.
Yeah, so in the, in the budget that was adopted for this current fiscal year, we had budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the project. And then the repairs that, I don't remember that figure off the top of my head, if that increased the budget. And then, as you mentioned earlier, the contract went up a little bit when we got the bids back.
And seventy-five thousand dollars of that was from a grant stake.
That's right.
Yes. All right.
So Sue, you need a, you're going to need a motion to approve this. Someone take a minute to make the motion.
You want a motion just to approve the budget management as, as presented to us?
Um, if, yes, you could do it that way, or you could approve ordinance 2022 oh six for budget amendments.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve. Twenty zero two dash oh six budget amendment.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
About a second.
I'll second the motion.
We have second, we discuss it for a moment forward. All in favor? On your post? Oh. Will you staff a second? You ready?
Yeah, I'm with you.
We know the American Rescue Plan update.
Yeah, we're there.
So as you have heard over the last couple of months, we've been working on the towns. Portment of the American Rescue Plan. And we had initially requested funding for a part-time position. We hired someone. There are some unexpected circumstances that arose with that gentleman. He had to step away. So we have reached out to Land of Sky. Regional council, our local council of governments here to assist with the remainder of the work that he was working on. So if you are amenable to that, we would need approval to sign that contract for fifteen thousand dollars. If we can cover in our existing departmental budgets. So we'll, we'll run through this update real quick and then we can come back to that in just a moment. So again, the American Rescue Plan was signed the last year, last March. It consisted of 1.88 trillion dollars in federal investments of that. A portion dubbed the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Was earmarked for $350 billion and. Every single state, local government, tribal government across the country, which I believe are about 19,000. Received a portion of that funding per capita basis. Mills River is set to receive approximately $2.3 million. The first half of that came in this year and the second half will be coming in. Should be coming in at the end of summer is what we're, we're hearing. An interim final rule was issued last May of 2021. Which was just what it says. It was the, the interim rule kind of was a placeholder with standards for how that money could be utilized. And then they, that was up for public comment. They received over 1,500 comments to that at the federal level. And then issued the final rule on January 6th of this year. So initially, the, the use of funds were for four specific categories. And those were addressed the COVID public health and negative economic impacts associated from the pandemic. Replacing the lost revenue that occurred because of the, the pandemic. Providing premium pay to essential frontline workers. And then making necessary infrastructure investments. And that one specifically is targeted towards water and wastewater and broadband. The item that I'm going to talk a little bit more about tonight is this replacement of lost revenue. Now, initially, when the, when the interim final rule came out. There was a complicated formula that we had to go through to figure out. If we've lost revenue according to the federal formula, it wasn't just straight line looking at the books and saying. Revenue's decrease in these categories or not. We were in the process of working on that and then found out that. The final rule, which was forthcoming. Basically nullified that component of the, of the, of the rule. We no longer had to follow it. So the way that that was set up was in that category of lost revenue, revenue replacement. If you could prove that you've lost revenue. You could use the amount that you've lost. For projects that are considered general government services. So essentially, anything that the town is legally able to provide. In the state of North Carolina, that town could be, or excuse me, that money could be used for that purpose. So just as an example. If you could prove you've lost $10,000 due to the pandemic, whether it's through reduced sales tax or property tax payments that didn't come in. Then you could use $10,000 of your allotment on general government services. AKA essentially anything that local governments are allowed to do. And then the remainder of those funds had to be utilized for those other three categories I mentioned a moment ago. Now, the final rule I mentioned that was approved on January 6th. Included with it a standard allowance of $10 million. What the, what the feds heard from their public comment was that. Not as many places lost revenue as I think they initially intended or initially suspected. And so very, very few people were able to take advantage of the. Lost revenue category, which is the broadest category of eligible uses that those money, those funds can be spent on. And so what they did was created this $10 million standard allowance, meaning any jurisdiction that received. What, they received ARPA funding. Could use up to $10 million of that funding for general government services. Now for Mills River, obviously receiving 2.3. It means we can, the town could use a hundred percent of the, of its funding for general government services. Places like Asheville or Bunyan County that are receiving more than $10 million, they can only use $10 million of this lost, lost revenue category. And you'll know that I've got the double asterisks on the final rule because we are expecting changes to that final rule. We don't know when, as folks in school government said, it could be today, tomorrow, or in six months. I don't think they're going to be wholesale changes to the whole program. What we expect, there might be some changes to how the bidding requirements, the uniform guidance. Comes into play with regards to how local governments utilize the funding. So I showed this to you at your visioning session last month about eligible services. Obviously, we don't provide all of these services, but this is just an example of. When they mean general government services, they actually mean any service that the government provides. So it could be parks and recreation, police. Planning and zoning, anything that, that governments are allowed to author, or authorized to spend money on. So the final revenue replacement rule states that it's a dollar for dollar use. So. In order to utilize ARPA funding. You have to, this gets into some complicated budgeting activities, but essentially. If you spend a hundred thousand dollars of, of local money, as in property tax revenue, sales tax, what have you. Then you do a budget amendment and pull in a hundred thousand dollars from your ARPA savings account to be used on any project. Or service that the town is able to do, buying property, buying equipment. Making improvements to facilities, anything like that. And the big one here is that you can go back and capture previous expenditures. You could go as far back as March of last year for this purpose. We have discussed internally, if council wants to take this route, that we do not go back to the previous fiscal year. Because of auditing procedures, it, it would just complicate. An audit that's already been completed for a previous year. So we have looked at, starting on July 1st of 2021, moving forward up through this fiscal year. To report those expenditures. We have, we have to report them. But we don't have to actually. Pull in the ARPA funds at the same time, if that, if that makes sense. And then the, the bold item there, the last bullet is. Projects are not required to meet original, original eligible expenditure categories. So you remember those four categories I showed you when we got started. This allows you to spend much broader, the authority is much more broad. It does not, though, exempt you from following the federal guidelines for, for bidding. Complex of interests, discrimination policies, all those sorts of things. All that still comes into play, as does the reporting. There's the compliance component of it. So you still have to adopt the various policies that we've talked about, eligibility worksheet. We have to do, in our case, we only have to do annual reports. Our first report's coming up on April 30th. And other items that we're required to have on, on hand, most of which we do is pay classification policy, which we have. We have a written benefits policy. It might need to be tweaked to make sure that it clearly spells out. What the town provides in terms of, it does pay social security, those sorts of things. Effort certification forms are required for non-exempt employees. Is that right too? Is it, is it for everyone? The, the certification that they were working in their position.
The certification has to be supplied. Absolutely for hourly. I believe. School government is recommending everybody sign.
Okay, so what that is, is basically annually, the employee would attest that they worked. The hours that they said that they worked and they did, they did their job. Payroll records and then time sheets, which obviously we, we keep all that. And we'll have to keep separate copies of this for ARPA reporting compliance. And we have to maintain those copies until 2031. Just five years after the. Required expenditure deadline. So in terms of process and budgeting. What we would like to do is go through the normal budgeting process, just as we do every year. Balance the budget with existing revenues and planned expenditures. And then, once you roll into July 1st and council. We have an opportunity to talk about how do you want to pay, you want the money to be spent. Let's say we identify purchasing a new vehicle for, for $35,000, just as an example. Once we identify the project, then we would do a budget amendment to pull the money out of the ARPA savings account. Put it in the general fund and then spend it on that item. Did I say that right?
Yes, but I was, I was going to, I was actually going to recommend. Because of auditing purposes, if we go ahead and do the budget amendment. As part of our year-end budget amendments.
Yes.
Because by then the last payroll would have been run, we can use those numbers. And so instead of waiting until July 1st, we can go ahead and do it. Like June 3rd.
Right, for the, for the existing, for the current year. Which means that we can go back and report that we spent. Eight hundred and some thousand, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, in salaries and. And it can cover all the benefits as well, so payroll taxes, retirement, all those things that are, that we account for. So essentially, when we, if we do that budget amendment at your last meeting in June. When we get on the July, second of July 1st, which is our new fiscal year. The town is able to spend up to that dollar amount on a project. We just have to go through a budget amendment, just like we did this evening. So again, we would adopt the budget as if we don't have these funds available at all. We would move into the new fiscal year with that budget amendment in June. Identify a project. Transfer the money into the, into the operating budget and then complete the project. And there's a, and of course, follow all of the reporting and reviewing and project, process. Steps to ensure we're in compliance. And we already have a box set up with the files to begin that work. So what I'm recommending to you as, as your manager is that we go with the revenue replacement. Option. We're not. Beholding to that, if we, if, if it's a box we have to check on the summary, or excuse me, report that's coming up. Doesn't mean we have to use it. It just means that we have the option to use it. Which, which again, I'm recommending that you will take advantage of that because that's how, that's what would give the town. The most flexibility to impact the most people and do the most good for the community. And then, again, you would adopt the. Upcoming year's budget, fiscal year 23's budget. Without considering the ARPA funding that's in the bank. And then we would do a budget amendment at the end of June to capture eligible expenditures for the current fiscal year. And then beginning on July 1st, we essentially have a, a chunk of money that is eligible to be spent. On this, on whatever projects the town identifies. That's, that's all I have.
So when would be the soonest that the fire department could get the money that they were? Told in December.
July 1st.
Okay, so that'll be soon. Okay.
Going on to that, then, could you not do the? You said that you could go back and pay for expenses that you heard up until last, last March, huh? So why can't you write the check to the fire department out of general fund and replace it with our funds whenever they come in? Whenever it's available.
That is a scenario that we discussed as far as the nonprofit request.
We did discuss that in. Technically, once we adopt all the policies, that is still our trigger point. Once we adopt all our policies, we could go ahead, make our journal entry.
Yes.
Move the ARPA funds in for whatever the total of, of number is, whether it's 800, whatever or not. And go ahead and write a check to the fire department this fiscal year. But our trigger is still the policies, which we are trying to get to you ASAP.
The trigger, putting the money back. Into the general fund. From the ARPA funds would be the policies, correct?
Uh, not exactly. You have to have the policies adopted prior to spending any money that you plan to reimburse yourself with, with ARPA funding. Because when we get audited, they're going to look back and say, we wrote a check on May 1st, your policies weren't adopted until.
But.
Which one are you talking about?
Yeah, there. Yeah, so if you read those, you can kind of interpret why they would make.
Understand.
Make sure you didn't break any of those restrictions.
Go back one more slide. But what I'm seeing there is you're, you're able to spend money out of your general fund and being reimbursed from the ARPA money.
That's right.
But you're saying, before you can even spend money for. The premium pay for the fire department. You're going to have to have the policies in place.
That's right.
Because, okay, then how could you go back until last March and reimburse yourself from?
That's what, that's what the federal law says. We don't plan to do that. And even if, because, because I mentioned of the, the fact that that year is closed out and the audit's been complete. But the way that, the reason that you can do it, one, it allows you to go back in time. But two, even before you do that, these, these, the conflicts of interest, civil rights, all those things need to be. Adopted with a date on them. And then as soon as those are adopted. I suppose you can do it the same night, as long as you did the, the action on the policies first and then make that budget amendment the same night. So even, and that's, that's one of the confusing parts about this is. While you're allowed to spend money on a much broader array of things, you still have to follow the federal. you still have to follow the federal requirements as far as bidding procedures, conflict of interest, and all those sorts of things. So it cuts down the red tape, but there's still some red tape.
Are you confident, excuse me, are you confident that the the documents that you'll get from the league and this, is that who's doing?
Uh, Land of Sky.
Land of the Sky are gonna cover the town completely.
Yes.
So they're, they're issue, they're gonna issue documents that you can just fill in at the top of the town measure.
They will fill all of that stuff in for us and we'll get it to you as soon as we can. And they also are gonna help us with our reporting.
How long did the, the, the higher guy, how long did he work on it before?
He only actually worked about a week. I don't wanna get into too much personnel in a public meeting, but.
Give me the hours they worked, right?
Yeah, he, he worked, he worked a week, over forty hours. And he completed drafts of a couple of the policies that are required.
Are we gonna be able to use that, any of the, any of the work that he, he did?
Absolutely.
One question that brought up to me. I would not function sure. This ARPA money, it has to be spent by
It has to be obligated by December thirty first of twenty twenty four. It has to be spent by December thirty first of twenty twenty six. An example of that might be if, if the town had a contract for construction and the contract was signed on November first of twenty twenty four, and the completion date wasn't expected until twenty twenty five, that's fine, because the contract has been signed, the money's been obligated.
Whatever we was gonna use our ultimate money would have to be spent and be able to be
Yes. Yes.
If it's not spent at that time, what happens?
I don't know that we've heard that, but I'm assuming we would pay back the difference of what we were.
It would go back, okay.
That's a good point.
It might be hard to get it back from the nonprofit. But if especially if they spend it on something.
But, but with, with this revenue replacement, we don't have to worry about how the nonprofit is spending the money. Basically, we put it into our budget, we make them a donation.
They, they, we, we still have to abide by state law, which means the town couldn't give a, couldn't give money to a nonprofit that didn't provide a service that the town is already allowed to provide. Now, most of the nonprofits that we've worked with in the past, like Smart Star or the Housing Assistance Corporation, Farmers Market, are services that the town is legally allowed to provide. And so we've been partnering with nonprofits to provide that service to the town. So yes, as long as the nonprofit who's receiving the funding is using it for a purpose that, that municipalities in the state are authorized to do, then yes, we're covered. But if someone was, we're not allowed to install broadband, for example. So we wouldn't be able to give money to a broadband provider just outright to, to install broadband.
So tonight, you're looking for a motion to go into contract with a land of sky to develop all these. Will any of Land of Skies people be present, or do we need them present to that, that we adopt all these?
Though, I will make every effort to make sure that they are present, they're not required to be, but I would like to have them in the room to help answer questions. That's right. Which is what they're charging other communities for.
I was gonna ask, is any other communities using the services?
The only one I know of in Henderson County is Flat Rock, but I know that they're working on the smaller communities of Henderson County as well.
Not unauthorized to sign.
I'll move that we authorize the town manager to enter into contract line in Sky Regional Council for development of the ARPA policies for maximum fifteen thousand dollars.
First, about a second.
I'll second it.
Sue gets called up, we'll go to the quarterly financial dashboard.
Okay. With the end of the third, third quarter, revenues, as I've been reporting all year, are very strong. In fact, they're, they're, they're starting to approach the, the full budget, a full fiscal year budget. And that's mostly attributed to increased sales tax and to our property tax collections. Motor vehicle collections are coming in high as well. There are other items like permits are over budget. So basically, revenues are doing very well. Expenditures are, if, if you were to look at the, at the bottom of the expenditures columns and go across to actual versus budget, we're at seventy nine percent of our budget. You would expect it to be seventy five percent this time of year. It's running a little bit higher, again, because of the payments to the fire department. But if you look at the individual departments, they're all either right on track or lower. Economic development's a little higher, but there aren't any more payments really to be made out of there. Oh, also with rising inflation, costs for all of our supplies have gone up. So for departments to be able to hold where they are with those rising costs shows you that we are watching your dollars. Interest rates are finally on the move, which is good news for our investments. We're still, I'm still conservatively diversifying the investments. Just, you know, I've, I've given you a cash distribution, just to give you an idea with interest rates. For example, capital management trust in the bottom chart is at zero point one seven percent. The last month, it was at point oh one. So we're making, finally seeing movement. I was just able to renew a CD at point two one percent, which some of them are at point oh three. So think things are finally going in that direction. We're, for the top graph, we're retaining fund balance commitments for cash flow, reserves for law enforcement, capital reserves for town hall and parks, and assigned fund, fund balance for building maintenance. Overall, we're in a really good cash position. Oh, I would entertain any questions. And if there's anything, any council member would like to see different on this quarterly report, please let me know. There's not a lot of room for additions, so it would have to be a substitution.
Great job in collecting. And the citizens are also doing a great job of paying. And the economy seems to be doing better than what would be expected for what we've been through over the past couple of years. Sales tax revenue's still up, everybody's able to keep their vehicle taxes paid, or property taxes paid, I feel. But we're living in a great community.
And one more thing, just for your information, once this is presented to council, it does go on the website, on the financial page under transparency.
So that's all we got on that. We'll move on to G watershed update.
So we've been talking about watershed administration for the last several months now. And one of the questions that was brought up was, considering the fact that the watersheds even exist are because of the raw water intakes for the city of Hendersonville, the city of Asheville. I was asked to speak with the, both of those entities about cost sharing for that service. I met with the city manager of Hendersonville a couple of weeks ago, and he requested that if this board would like to send a letter to their board, their elected officials, he would pass that on to them for that request. So that's what that's for the Hendersonville. I've reached out to Asheville, have not been able to sit down with anybody yet, but I continue to pursue that option as well. So again, if, if the board is, is interested, we can draft a letter stating the fact that we would like them to help offset the costs of watershed administration, and it would be sent to the Hendersonville City Council.
I'd like to see it myself. The only reason we're doing is because there are two water intakes and, you know, one water intake in Town Mills River and the other one just outside of Town Mills River. Whether they'll play ball or not, so another story, but Michael said it was gonna take fifteen percent of his time to enforce the watershed rules for Town Mills River that has no water lines.
When saying that, I, I am in favor of us keeping the watershed in-house in Mills River, as far as taking care of the permit, because it's on Mills River property owner's property that we're dealing with. It was always a hassle before to have to run to Hendersonville, get up with somebody, just turn around, come right back out here to get his own permit, and then go right back out there to get something else, go to permit. And we can look after our own a little bit better that way. But I, you know, if they're willing to help us out a little bit. So we want to ask staff to develop a number based on potentially fifteen percent of max time to send these to public offices and see how they're, what they put on their agenda, like.
I'd be surprised if they even give a number, I would just test the waters. It's something we're having to take on. And while Mills River property owners are saddled with the restrictions that come with it, it's not a big ask, ask them to help share the cost of administration of it.
I just feel like if it come in front of this board, Jeff, the first thing that we would ask is, how much will they ask? What do they mean? What have we got in our budget? But I don't know, I don't know how, I know that'd be the first question I would ask here, is how much money are they asking?
That would be my first question as a manager, if someone else came to us with that kind of request.
I just think it would speed the process up a little bit if we give them over. And I think we need to be fair about it, though. I don't, you know. We drink some of this water ourselves here, some of the residents, I mean, so it's a service, but if they would be willing to pitch in a little bit, I think it would be, make sense, you know?
I would be comfortable with whatever Michael and Daniel come together with on, on a figure to request myself. They're perfectly capable of doing that. I don't, I don't necessarily think, and I have to tell them the number that you'll ask for.
Yeah, I think what would help us is, either you, you want us to send a letter without a figure or with a figure. And if you want it with a figure, we'll come up with a reasonable figure. And if you don't, we won't on that part of it. So you just tell us how you want us to proceed.
Yes.
I'm good with the number. I would hope it would be the hundred percent of the administrative cost, because they can pass that on to water users, including the water users up there right here in town. But I don't think it's unfair, ask, ask them to pick up, if it's fifteen percent of that time to meet this requirement, and ask them to do all of that cost, and they'll just pass it on to water users, no matter where they go.
I don't, I don't think so. We're, we're good, we've got consensus on it.
Moving on to staff updates, financial director.
No, I have, I have two things.
Okay.
First one is, you may have noticed on your agenda under public comment section, there's a lot more verbiage than there ever used to be. That is in order to stay in compliance with the public, the open meetings law as to remote meetings. There's a different notice requirement for a remote meeting. And if, if any of you attend remotely, this, or any board, any one member attends remotely, we have to notice it that way. We send out a notice to the paper a week before the meeting. So and we rarely know if someone's going to attend remotely until the day of the meeting. So in order to stay in compliance, we have to be able to have a notice somewhere on our website that says that somebody may attend remotely, and here's the link. I talked to someone at the school government, and they felt this was a really good way to stay in compliance, because all of our council and committee and board, that all of our agendas are posted on the website, and anybody wishing to know anything about the meeting would go there, even as late as the day of the meeting. So it basically, it, it, it's just covering us, protecting us to stay in compliance. It's, it's a little extra, but it'll be on every meeting agenda going forward. Sorry, you're right, I had one more thing. Back under, when we approved the consent agenda, we appointed Wayne Carlin to the ag committee, and we did not do it in such a way to give him the existing term that ends on January thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
So we missed the date part on that motion, is what we did.
Right, so we can, we can go back and amend that motion, or right here, we can just make a motion.
Yeah, I think we need to make a motion. We use the vacant seat, but she needs the date. The January
Thirteenth, twenty twenty four. That was made by Mr. Cantrell.
I'd like to amend a motion.
So you wanna go back and amend the? You wanna?
I wanna do what you wanna tell me to do.
If, if you would just make a new motion.
I wanna make a motion for Mr. Carlin to be on the egg advisory board until January thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you.
Okay, so before we leave you, I have to apologize to Mr. Foster. He brought up that he thought, and he's got it wrote down, that when the DOT guy spoke that the start date, Jim, or the let date, let date?
He said that second agreement, but he said that the let date for women is on project, which I was very interested in.
See, he couldn't find it in the minutes, so if you would, just go back and possibly add that, just since it's a major concern of some of the mill driver society. That we will look and see that noted in it.
If he actually said it.
It seems like I remember him saying it, Jim remembers him saying it, some of the other council people remember him saying it.
I, I think he said it, but he was saying a lot, and I went back to and picked up details of, of the PowerPoint.
Okay.
So and we'll have to do this by motion. So we're amending the minutes of which dates? Thank you. And, and we're amending the section of, obviously where DMT was, to include the And and we're amending the section of obviously where DMT was to include the highway one then ninety one widening let date or do you know what?
So would it be possible for you to go back and listen to that segment and just to make sure before we amend these and possibly amend this and move this amendment forward to the next meeting?
Sure.
I just don't want to put anything in there that might have not have said. I don't want to put him in a bind. If, you know, if we're all sitting here thinking we heard it, but we don't know a hundred percent that we heard it.
All right, I'll I'll go back and I'll listen to the tape. If a date was put in there, I'll bring you amended minutes to be reapproved. And and those would be on the consent agenda as amended minutes.
If I could take the opportunity to just update the public, just in fact, today there was a an MBO meeting about this. And the let date is July eighteenth of twenty twenty three.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it earlier. I just got Jim showed it to me before the meeting and I was meant to adjust it when we went through the consent agenda, but. Okay, tax collector.
Good evening. As of the end of March, our collection percentage is ninety eight point eight nine percent or balance to collect was a little over thirty thousand dollars. It's less than, less than that now. We're just chipping away at our delinquent list here and there. I have about a hundred delinquent accounts that we're going to be publishing in the paper, probably the last week in April. Because of the the paper only publishes once a week. By the time I get it to him next week, it'll be the week after. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Any questions for our lake? Zone administrator?
Good evening. Brief update. So the planning board met on April fifth. We did bring the draft watershed ordinance text before them just to look over. They felt comfortable with it, asked some good questions, and they did review it and make a recommendation for approval. Um, the text and the draft map are currently under review by the state watershed administrator. So once he does that and sends me any final comments, we'll bring that before council to set the public hearing and then for council's consideration. After adoption by council, we have to then send it to the environmental management commission for final, final approval. But since the watershed coordinator will have already looked at it, so I saw it, we're basically set through that. Um, that's the planning board. Um, and then we had a meeting with the board of adjustment this Tuesday on April twelfth for quasi judicial training, uh, which went very well. That's all I have.
Mike, I got one question, uh, backing up a little bit tonight. So the the project on Jeffers Road that went through last meeting, so do they have to have a watershed permit or not?
No, we require, so before I'll issue the zoning permit for them to construct any buildings, we require proof of submission to the state for stormwater plans.
Stormwater plans oversee the.
Yeah, so if we go back to the watershed maps I showed a few meetings ago, the center half of the town is in protected watershed areas. And then it's really like the southern corridor and top northern corridor are in these state reviewed areas. And that's because Henderson County is considered an urbanizing county by the state. And because of that, they apply these additional stormwater requirements. So any development in the town, again, that meets the threshold usually disturbs more than an acre of land, which you have to get a sediment sediment erosion control permit anyway. If you're in one of those state reviewed areas, you would have to submit a stormwater plan or prove to me you're you're exempt.
Okay, that'll be made explained to the public when they ask me that question.
Just a couple of things. Uh, this this morning, we had our pre-construction meeting for the picnic shelter. The we signed a contract to get that process moving. They expect to be onsite, uh, doing that project in June. They're working on the permitting right now and getting their subs lined up. And then I think it was actually last week, but I forgot to include in my weekly report. Most of you probably aren't aware of this, but when we installed those charging stations out front, we applied for a rebate through the state. That was part of where that money came from for that. And it's five thousand dollar per port. So we have two chargers and four ports. And we finally got that rebate last week at twenty thousand dollars. So the total project cost was fifty six for installation and and we just received a rebate of twenty thousand for that. So we do plan to schedule, um, a belated ribbon cutting, but it's a stage in the details on that. That's all I have.
Um, no, what what you, they're both approved. I'm going to go back and look at the tape on March twenty fourth. And if he mentioned the let date, then I will bring you amended minutes for the next meeting.
On the topic of minutes, is it appropriate to have the adjournment time as well? We always have adjournment time. I always, the minutes always say when the meeting starts, when it's called to order, but it never says when it adjourns. And I thought it'd be appropriate, especially when trying to account for staff being.
And and it is, it is practiced a lot of places. My apologies, um, the room clears out, everybody leaves and I forget to look at the clock. So I can do it if you if you're asking for it.
Well, I'm asking, but I'm just one of five, so.
Didn't think about it, will give you that. Maybe if we hit the adjourn button. It takes a while to pick all our equipment back up. Okay, maybe we're getting out of that here in a few months. No change, you got anything? How about a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Okay, second.